Okay, we'll call the meeting to order this morning. First thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the same side. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens out there to be heard? Not, we'll go right into our employee recognition. One of my favorite things to do in the county, and I like this. I do. And the first one we've got today is Dave Overgold. Yes, Dave. Dave is here 15 years with us, huh?
Yeah.
Ryan, you've got anything to say about this guy?
Oh, go ahead.
I wasn't going to add that, David.
Well, this gentleman over here, Mr. Chair, I may... Do I have something to say about Dave? Yes, I have something to say about Dave. Dave's been with the county now 15 years, and frankly, when we get him to a meeting, he's very good... No, Dave has... We give him a bad time about being prompted meetings, but frankly, I think his record is a lot better than we harass him about. But the reason why we can harass him about it is because of his personality. He just really rolls with things, and I think we can't find a better highway engineer that is customer-friendly, and that's what we want. There's a lot of people to be served out there. We handle all of the township maintenance roads, except for four townships. And Dave is really responsive to them, gets maybe sometimes frustrated, as we all do, with all of the issues with highway. But his demeanor and dealing with the public and customer service is just outstanding. It really is, and I think that's really where he shines. Although, I think when he comes to the board as well, and you five commissioners ask him about a little stretch of road out on a curve, and he says, "Well, yes, I was over that last week, and frankly, you know, there's a little dip in that where..." And there isn't a spot in the county that does no either. And I'm really impressed at that, too. So Dave knows his technical side, and he's strong, really strong in customer service, and that's what makes a strong engineer for us.
I definitely have to agree with that, because I've taken several trips with Dave out around county roads, and no matter which road you go on, he knows what the name of the road is, and what number it is, and it's just really impressed me, too. Thank you very much for being with us for 15 years. You want to give a speech, Dave, or anything?
I'm good.
I've got 15 minutes. Next one we have is Tim Griffin. I got 20 years of service with him. Again, the same thing. Present a grateful recognition of 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and the citizens.
Yeah, I get a lot of praise.
Okay, very good. I don't know if you need the mic or not, but I'm really... Pick up pretty good.
Tim's been with us for 20 years. I think he spent 14 years in North Dakota and two years in Delaware. And he thinks that he might be retiring this year, but we're not going to let him. And I tell you one thing about Tim Griffin. If you're ever in a critical incident, you'll want him. He never gets excited. He just calmly does it, and everything moves smooth. So that's one thing we'll definitely...
Well, who's changed from his North Dakota days, then?
You know, the funny thing is, I know him...
Who knows?
...from the law enforcement. He's a cap.
Roll back, Dirk.
He lies a lot.
You're a law enforcement.
We'll probably have one more presentation later on in the meeting. If Annette shows up, we'll have that later in the meeting. Okay. And again, thank you to Tim and Dave for your service. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for April 19th and 26th.
Move to approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the bills have been around. All, we need to approve the bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we'll go on to flood pain issue. Tim, are you going to handle this with regard to...
Mr. Trippke. I thought Mr. Trippke was the one who put himself on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Trippke, you want to come up and explain your situation there?
I wish Tim would start first. Just to set it...
Why don't you come up and sit with him? If you don't mind, by the microphone. You need an additional chair? Any good? Do you want to settle?
Take one from over there.
I guess this concerns some property in Spring Craig Township that we're talking about. We had... I know we had a meeting discussion of this before, but...
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've talked about this property previously. It's a property that Trippke's purchased about two years ago now. Paid cash for it. There was no disclosure. They went to sell it, found out it's in the flood plain. The property is not... Doesn't meet the flood standards. There was an illegal addition that was put on it that made it even worse. So they have come to us and gone to their congressman and to FEMA, trying to find something that can be done. We, again, we've talked about this in the past. John Devine is a FEMA representative who... I mentioned to Frank that he was sending us a letter. We haven't gotten the official letter yet. He sent me a heads-up email about it, and when the official letter gets here, we've got 30 days to respond back to them with how do we intend to take care of the situation? This one and a couple others that they are alleging might be violations also. We've talked about this one in a couple of different manners. One would be to do an acquisition of the property, a straight-up acquisition of the property. The board did not seem like that was the way they wanted to go. You had all talked about the possibility of just raising the house, removing the addition, raising the house, and bringing it into compliance with the flood standards, which would make the property saleable at a much less... With a much more reasonable flood insurance rate associated with it. We did have an appraisal done of the property. The initial appraisal came back at $139,000. The appraiser came back just yesterday with a reappraisal with our request to remove the addition from the appraisal equation. That took $8,000 value off the property, so it was down to $131,000. I guess that's the situation. We... With the letter from... When the letter gets here from FEMA, we have to, like I said, within 30 days, provide information to them as to what our intentions are to take care of this situation and what our timeline may be. That's kind of where we're at with it. I have not had anybody out there to give us an estimate on what raising the house would be. I can do that. I know it's not the Trippkes... It's not the answer that the Trippkes want to see, to have the house brought into compliance with flood plain standards. They would much rather see the county acquire the property and be done with it. Mr. Chair, here, if you can...
Mr. Chair. Looking at what we have in front of us here today. Tim says they paid cash for the property, and no one disclosed to them that the property was in the 100-year flood plain. The fact that they weren't informed by the seller, is that an issue?
Should be.
With whom? Between the Trippkes and the sellers?
Between them and the seller, them and the realtors.
Okay, so if they wanted to do something there, that's not our issue?
It's not our issue, but they should consider that.
When they tried to sell the property, they were informed it was in the flood plain, and that flood insurance would be as high as $7,500 per year. In other words, if you want... If you sell the property, the person purchasing the property has to pay the $7,500 per year. And they would know that? If you maintain the property, do you have to pay the $7,500 per year for flood insurance, if there's a mortgage?
Yeah. If they paid cash, they would have to pay the flood insurance.
Okay, okay. But if you did sell it, you would inform the people that follow the rules?
Yeah, we had it on the market.
Sure.
And then we just... John Devine and just pretty much said, "This is well taken off the market, because nobody, whoever looked at it can't afford $7,500."
And then, my third thing. There are issues with the permit that the county issued for placement of the modular home, and also an unpermitted... What is the issue? What are the issues?
Well, the issue with the permit was we did not catch the fact that it was in the flood plain when we issued the last permit for a new residence on the site. That residence's main floor is about six inches below the base flood elevation. The other issue is that there was an addition added by the property owner, not the Trippkes, that connected the house to the garage, which was unpermitted and is at grade, which makes it what flood insurance is based on. So the elevation is so low, that's why the flood insurance is so high.
The fact that the county issued a permit and wasn't aware of that, whose issue is that? The county's or theirs?
That's a county's issue.
Okay, what would that involve, from your point of view?
Well, according to FEMA, it would involve us mitigating that situation to bring it into compliance.
Which means what?
Well, it means we either acquire it, or we raise the structure and put a foundation under it that brings it into compliance. Well, at our expense. FEMA is asking that, yeah. FEMA won't provide money. DNR may have... Has some funds. I've also talked with the watershed district. They're willing to participate in anything that we're looking at there, so...
Then, what is the issue in front of us today? In front of this board today?
We want to get something done. We need to...
It's been two years.
...dragging on. We... When we tried, decided to put the house up for sale, we moved out. And then... So we're not... Nobody's living there now, and we don't want to move back if something's going to be able to happen to help us out. And then we have to move again. We want to do that. We've already been through a FEMA situation in Barlow, where we bought a house and remodeled it, and it was... It had to be taken down. So then we took all that money and bought the one in Clay County. And it's just kind of the same thing.
Didn't realize we're in the flood area.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten an estimate on bringing it into compliance yet?
No.
So... I think that's important for us to know. I mean, if, you know... So we're looking at $130,000 or $40,000 acquisition, right?
Right.
And... But if it costs $70,000 to bring it into compliance, I mean, you know, we're spending taxpayers' money. It would be, you know... That would make more sense for us to do than, you know, to buy the property out.
Right.
But actually, you have to see the picture. Our house is sitting here, which is too low, too. The window wells and everything are too low. That's been... You guys gave permit for that, which is too low. And then he... The person that we bought it from built this addition that's double the size of the house, which is way, way low. You have to go down steps, and it's way, way low.
Ground level, sir.
And then we have our garage, and you had it too, which is the same. So if you raised... I don't know... I think you're talking... I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what you're saying. Raise the addition, too, or just the house? Okay. So then we have... We'd have to tear off our addition, which is as big as our house. I don't know. That'd just be sitting there, I guess, because I don't know. And then our house, and then our garage. So that'd be quite a situation.
See, the whole thing is, the family room is built into the garage, you know, the rafters. So, I mean, it... Well, he's a contractor. He knows all about it.
They're all three connected, obviously. They got the... Basically, the garage is sitting here, then the house, and then he put an addition in between both, which has no footing under the addition or the garage that connects to the house, which the house has a footing. Was it a four-foot footing that goes all the way around? And then he put windows in there, which the DNR caught, and said that was...
Unknown.
Unknown, because there's windows that are ground level in the foundation that go around the house.
Mr. Chair. There are a lot of concerns here. But I have to hear from our staff. Where does the responsibility lie? I haven't heard that yet.
Yeah, see, that's... I guess that's my point, is that, you know, if the county, you know, did something incorrectly or improperly at the time with the permit, you know, then I think it's our responsibility to correct that. But these other issues were problems with the people that sold you the property, the people that represented them that didn't disclose these issues. And so, you know, what we're doing is looking at spending taxpayers' money to, you know, to make right a mistake that was made. But these issues, we, you know... You know, if it's more cost-effective to bring it into compliance, then I think that's what we're... You know, if we did make a mistake, then we have to correct that. But to make the other situation right, that may be a legal issue that... And I think we talked about that before, that you have to get, you know, have to pursue in terms of, you know, them making it right with you, so...
We do have the letter... We do have the letter from the county that you had admitted you had made an error, and you would rectify it.
Yeah. We got the part that...
And I think we should. If we... I don't think we're... That's probably in dispute. If we made a mistake, we need to fix it.
Everything. There's been... It's just kind of like a crazy mess that somehow, other... You know, us, we're so stupid to do it, to buy it with all that. But still, you let this get by for many years. You know, it should have been... We shouldn't have even had it...
The family room should have been caught.
We should have never had it in front of us to buy, because it was all an error. Way before we came along.
That's where we got a county commission before to watch it all stop. You know what I mean? I'm not picking on him.
Well, no, but I mean, people, you know, they obviously, you know, did something that they shouldn't have done.
Right, and it should have been caught. How do you assess the taxes?
That's what we're trying to get through here, dude.
Yeah, I mean, well, I guess what I'm saying, like I said, you know, and I think we've had that discussion, that, you know, we have to correct the mistakes that we made. But, you know, I... You know, and if that meant that bringing it into compliance costs $200,000, and we can buy the property for $130,000 or whatever, that's in the best interest of the taxpayers to do that. But if it costs $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 to make... To make... Bring it into compliance, which would still benefit you, because then it would make the property more sale... You know, saleable.
And we wouldn't have... We wouldn't have the addition. We'd have a big space.
But you're not correct. Like I say, we're still in the flood zone.
That's something that we aren't going to be able to change in any...
No.
I just wish they'd get us out of the flood zone, and we wouldn't have to worry about anything. I mean, with everybody.
Thank you.
But that ain't going to happen.
The... This property is located where? It's a mile north of Highway 10, the intersection of Highway 10 and Highway 9. Okay. And how many acres are we...
One.
It's one acre?
Just above.
And you mentioned...
There's four.
There's four houses in a quarter.
Okay. So are they all on the flood plain? Oh, yeah. And you said this house, the main floor was six inches below flood elevation? Approximately. I think there was an elevation certificate done on it, and I think that's...
Well, the river well...
Those are another issue. No, there's... Have we looked at a LOMAR to see what could be done to get him out of the flood plain?
I've been talking about the...
That'd be nice.
Well, I mean, when you start talking about serious dollars, you know, typically, if you have a dike built to a certifiable levee, and I... We've been involved in that business around here quite a bit. You know, maybe there's an alternative to this, and maybe what... Now that I hear that these... There's three other neighboring properties.
In fact, there are four.
You know, and they're all in the flood plain. That's not doing any of them any good, either. Buying the flooded... Paying for the flood insurance and so on and so forth. So, you know, and I know that... I know you mentioned the watershed. You know, we might be able to get some participating help from other agencies to look at ways to... But I think the first step would be to a LOMAR, wouldn't it, Tim? That would tell you what needs to be done to... I have talked with the DNR and said, you know, we really don't think this flood plain is accurate. Although, these particular properties have been in the flood plain since 1984. So it wasn't the 2012, you know...
Is it stable ground around them where a levee could be built, the issue?
Well, it's county roads. Well, there's a state highway on one side, and there's a county road on the other side, and then farm field around it. Are you talking about building a certifiable levee? Yeah. There's only five structures. Your cost-effectiveness is not going to exist.
Second, it is.
Do you want to see it?
The big part of it is never flooded, has it, Tim?
That's one of the reasons why you don't think about this property when you're dealing with it, is because there's never been an issue with flooding in this property.
And then John Devine wants all four of it?
Well, John has mentioned that if there's not another way of mitigating that the county ought to consider buying the four that are right on the corner.
You mean with our money? With the state's not interested?
Well, yeah. FEMA has actually...
Well, it's nice of them to recommend that, but I think what we... I think what we need is, you know... We need something, Tim, if, you know, that we can make a decision on, because we've been... We've talked about this, the same thing, the last time you folks were here.
Those emails are from December, and nothing is...
I think we appreciate your situation, but we need something we can decide on in a recommendation, and what the costs are going to be, and why we're responsible for making it right, so...
Mr. Chair.
I do feel, too, in... When it comes to the addition, and that was permitted by the county in 1993, we did make a grievous mistake, and, you know, I think we should remedy that when it comes to the first part, like Commissioner Wayland said. You know, I think that's the two-fold.
The permit issued, then, was only applicable to the house. There was no permit for the addition. He conspired that with us.
Well, whenever you said there is a mistake when it came to the county permitting, that's on ours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we can make a decision today. What I would like to see is a recommendation from staff and from our city attorney within the next week or two, recommending what this board should do to rectify the situation so far as we can do. And if that can be expedited, I think that would be in everybody's best interest. And we've already discussed it. It's been gone over many times, and that's how we can make our decision.
The letter from FEMA, when it gets here, like I said, gives us 30 days to look at those four properties, the ones that are right on the corner.
Well, didn't you say you talked to John the other day?
Tim, I recall... I recall a property in Oakport. It would be... It was just south of where Bob Gee's residence was.
Oh, on the other side of the Cooley.
Yeah, on the other side of the Cooley. And that was in the flood plain.
Yeah, we opted to buy him, and he opted not to.
Well, but they were... But they had a letter of map revision done or something, and there ended up being a ring dike there. And I believe that was taken out of the flood plain.
I'd have to look and see. I know they ring dyked.
Yeah.
But they didn't ring dyke... They... They were going to ring dyke with the watershed ring dike. They didn't want that, because it was too high and they couldn't see. It took all of their view away.
And this reminds me of these four. It reminds me similar of what we did with Anderson Addition, which is just out on County Road 95.
Right. And that's all well and good. The problem is, is that if it's a ring dike that's not certified, it doesn't take anybody out of the flood plain.
See, the whole problem is out there. The rest of the people out there, there's all violation against all of them. You know?
That's...
Right, Tim?
That's not necessarily true.
Well, that's what John said.
That's what John thinks.
Oh.
That's what we're supposed to find out.
We don't really want... We're just interested in... I'm sorry to sound selfish, but we just need to get ours settled. Some of those people probably are happy.
Yeah, we need something to make a decision on, and what it would cost to bring it in compliance, and what our options are, and how we're going to pay for it, and what the watershed will help with, and then we can make a decision.
Some of those people are totally happy, right there.
Then we can make a decision, and you folks can move on with what you want to do, so...
Brian, did you have something to add?
Well, Mr. Chair, I was in on the meeting that we held with the Trippkes, and I think that's what they're looking for. They have sat in limbo for quite a while, and I think that's why they, in frustration, have asked for this meeting today. So I think what Commissioner Ingersoll is saying, bring us a recommendation that we can work through, and I think that's what they want. I think there was admittance at that meeting that, yes, the county... It should have been required to be six inch higher and no windows in it. And then there was an addition that was added without being permitted. But... And that's what we have to work through. Did one then inspire the other to come along afterwards, or what is the county's obligation? But I think that what they want is a decision, one way or the other, so that they can act then on their other actions. So I think if you would set a... Try to set a timeline when staff should bring a recommendation. In other words, Tim Shaw brings a recommendation back with involvement from the locals.
Well, we'll try within two weeks. Like I said, this letter ought to be in Frank's hands. I thought it'd be there by today, but we're... I have an email copy of it, so we'll start working on it right now.
Why don't we put it in Tim's hand to get back to us with the Trippke situation, and he can bring it to us as soon as he can.
As quick as possible.
You know, I meant to say one thing. You know, if we did build it up or whatever, jack the house up, we're going to sell it, you know?
Well, you'll make it saleable.
Make it saleable. You know, the whole thing is, we don't even want to live out there. It's just a big mess.
And from the county's perspective, that's a more palatable option, because then it stays on the tax rules, too.
But the whole thing is, if we do this, you know, it's going to take time to do it. So how do you sell a place in the winter time? You know, late fall. You know what I mean? You know?
If FEMA buys this... Buy a house that's torn apart. You can't cut our house in three pieces.
It was... The valuation would be $8,000 plus, is what they figured after...
Right. And if the county is going to fix it, the county's going to have to Right, and if the county is gonna fix it, the county's gonna have to make it look like it wasn't three pieces.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, come back with a recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry for the delay, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to it.
Okay. You know, roughly two weeks, you say?
Well, we haven't got the letter yet from FEMA and whenever-
Tim, move.
Chair.
Like in a month, we might hear from you or a couple, a couple months, or what? A month, we might hear from you or a couple months?
We should have, we should have FEMA's letter addressed for sure within the thirty days, so I was saying by the end of May, give or take.
We've been waiting for this letter from John for, you know, and you talked to John the other day, he said the letter was gonna be sent out a week ago.
You know, that's what he told me.
I should be looking at to see if there are any potential buyouts for all of them.
I've been, I've been in contact with Pat Lynch down at the Minnesota DNR.
He told you that he didn't send the letter out because Tim was on vacation for three weeks.
That's what he told me.
And I was gone, but I mean, it could've come, that's not necessarily a good reason to hold up anything because I'm not here, but.
We got the letter coming, Steph.
It would've, nothing would've happened with it until I got that.
That's what he said, he goes, I don't know if I'm supposed to get this letter out, but Tim moved, couldn't be on vacation, so I figured there was no hurry.
Well, when I get a letter, which I'm supposed to begin this letter, I haven't got it yet.
Yep, it's supposed to be copy, copy coming to you and one to Brian.
Okay, when that shows up, we'll start a timeline, we know we have to do thirty days from there and, but in the meantime, we know what we have to do already, so, okay.
So come back to us for the recommendation.
Thank you.
We'll work on it.
So, just to get it straight, can we hear something from Tim?
Yep.
Very soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to, we're gonna have a discussion on the correctional facility and the law enforcement center, have a discussion of that, that we're bringing a couple of police chiefs and sheriffs up here. See where we are on this project.
Can I serve Mr. Chair if you'd like?
Go for it.
Yeah, thank you, I, I had asked Brian to put this on the agenda, last week, we had a jail finance meeting and the recommendation from the jail finance committee was to, to proceed with this project as one project, correctional facility or jail slash law enforcement center, and we had a meeting with the Morehead Business Association last week and after we completed that, I was thinking that we really haven't had this discussion as a board and about these two being viewed as one project, and as we've progressed with this, the recommendations from our construction managers and the companies that we interviewed for that were that it would be more cost effective to do these projects jointly, and so I wanted to have this discussion and maybe some action from the board in terms of, you know, that we, we move forward with this as one project, and so I, I had asked for the sheriff and the police chief to be here so they could give us their perspective on this and then we'll go on from there, so, thanks.
Bill, you gonna start her out or?
I, I know we've been, you know, since I've been elected, we've been trying to get the jail to go and we finally got it going, but, you know, there's talk about that, you know, that we'd wanna hold off with the law enforcement center, but I can just tell you, just this week, we again had a flood in our evidence and it's destroyed a lot of evidence now that we can't use, because how many times have they fixed the roof and it still leaks? They've never gotten it to stop leaking, and I, it wasn't that long ago, I wish Joe would be here when they did it again, but yet you at one point had some in your office?
Shannon's office roof gave him a cascading waterfall, my deputy chief's office, and the evidence issues a problem with us, we are so limited in space, we've used an off-site area that we actually had some case files rodents got into them, we don't have a central space adequate for storage of evidence, what we use now is, is we secure drugs and firearms and evidence we know is gonna be short term in the building and everything else goes elsewhere, including stuff that has to be archived, so we're investing more money into the facility offsite that we're using to make sure we get it tight, but it's, and Bill and I are one voice on this, it's one thing or another, and you can continue to invest and the city can continue to invest tens of thousands of dollars into a building that is about half the size of what would be acceptable and is, is of a unacceptable design and is basically in the way of constructing the jail, the correctional facility, I, it just, it, it doesn't make sense, I think one of the things we've got to be aware of is the taxpayer dollar, and Commissioner Wayland is my representative and I would be a little upset being six out of ten taxpayers in, in the county will be paying twice if we have to build a law enforcement center for the police department, a law enforcement center for the sheriff's office, and the other, every taxpayer in the county will not realize the efficiencies of, of the partnership that we've always had, when a repair needs be made on that building, if it's on my side, the city pays for it, if it's on Bill's side, the county pays for it, if it's a joint thing, we split it, that's how that building has been since way before, since I was in, in high school, the city has paid for half of the mon-, cost of the, of the building and of the expansions on it, and every time that happens, taxpayers save money, the efficiency can occur here because this is the county seat where the court and the jail and the sheriff's office are, that's where you're gonna be able to get the local municipal police department to help pay and defray the costs on a building, and everybody in this county benefits when that happens, you know, I think it's, it's no brainer, and the building, I'm gonna tell ya, you can only put lipstick on that pig for so long, and that's, we had that conversation last week, it is just not a prudent use of taxpayers' dollars to keep resuscitating it, it's time to declare it dead and, and come up with something efficient that's gonna serve all of our citizens, and that's worked.
And when we started this project, you know, there's, the issue is, is that we have to build a new correctional facility or jail, it's the old, the one we have is the oldest one in the state, it's not in compliance, we have no choice in that matter, and we've acquired property to the north of our campus in order to make this project work so we could keep our partnership in, with law enforcement and stay in one facility because it benefits law enforcement and therefore benefits all the taxpayers in the county, and so, I, I, you know, as we progressed with the jail plan, part of it is, is that we have to, to make the jail work that we've designed, we have to take the law enforcement center down, that's part of the entire project, so we really don't have any option in terms of, of building a law enforcement center, and, and I think the points that you both made, you know, the, the building, the jail is the oldest jail in the state, well, therefore, the law enforcement center is probably, you know, somewhere in, in that range also, probably one of the oldest, and it's nearly fifty years old at this point, and so it's, you know, it's, it's lived its usefulness and, and it's time to replace it, so.
And as the chief said, you know, when we decided to keep this a joint one, I mean, that saves us a lot of money, and forty percent of that law enforcement center is shared space, we didn't have, we didn't want to have our own, we'll say we'll share it with them, so it's a-
Yeah, I, the, the current plan for the jail extends about fifteen, twenty feet into the LEC, which is, that's, of course, that's on phase two when we start getting, building the administration part of, of the, of the jail, once, once the first phase is complete, with that, we also have to look globally at everything here, including parking, and one of the issues, for example, if, if we were to leave the LEC there, we would then have to bob out or extend out to the east more, the admin area, which loses again more prime parking spaces, you know, so, and, and even if you do that, the, the sheriff's department and the police, Morehead Police Department are operating way under the square footage needs, I mean, we, so far today, you've talked about the crappy building, which we know it is, it's a crappy building, and, you know, when you get sewage coming from upstairs to downstairs and so on and so forth, anybody who's been in there knows it's a crappy building and it needs to go-
Literally, when you say-
It's crappy, yeah, that's why I say it's crappy, it, it meets, it meets all definitions right there.
We got the travels right now.
I think so, you came over-
But the fact, but the fact of the matter is, for those, for those who might suggest that, well, why don't we just leave the LEC there and let's let the law enforcement live there for a while, we would have to do some remodeling, and let me tell you, to, to remodel that current jail facility into anything remotely acceptable for, for use by either police force, the cost would be extraordinary, it would, it would probably rank up there about as, you know, three quarters to what we would pay to build an entirely new facility, and again, I speak from, we were gonna, we were looking at, in our regional juvenile center, we were looking at doing a small remodel project there, and I think Brian, originally, we were looking at one point two million dollars and by the, by the time the architects got done with it, it was four million dollars, and that's just over at, at the juvenile center, so you can imagine what it would be trying to redo a jail, let's face it, that jail was in the sixties, I, I just drove by, or the law enforcement center, I just drove by it this morning, the police department, just the police department in Alexandria is significantly bigger than what you have in square footage right now, and that's just for, that's just for one agency.
About a third of the personnel.
And about a third of the personnel, so, you know what, Morehead has grown, Morehead's gonna continue to grow, and we need to do all law enforcement right by giving them the adequate, this is a long, long, long-term investment, when we've been working on this through the construction committee, everything we've talked about isn't just for today only, it's going out, as both of you know, forty to fifty years, planning for forty to fifty years from today, so that, you know what, had they done this, what we're doing today back when this thing was built, there could, there could have been design changes and that would have allowed us to, to add on or construct up differently, but they didn't, and we're doing that today, and I, I don't see how we can do one without the other, I, I just, I just don't see it.
If I, if I could add, add to that, Mr. Chairman, if you looked at paper this morning and it was a drug arrest of somebody who's selling fentanyl, L.A.'s heroin to residents of Fargo, they come from our city, and was part of DEA task force investigation, it is very provincial to think that a law enforcement center in any part of the Cass-Clay County area is gonna be used strictly by one agency, we are all part of task force, lakes to rivers, drug task force, DEA task force, metro, street crime unit, all of us have shared personnel and share the investment, we've got about one point two sworn law enforcement officers per thousand in this community, the regional area, the regional average is two, I come from a place where we have three, the reason we can work with those efficiencies is we work together, so I don't want anybody to think that this is Morehead making a grab for something or the sheriff's office making a grab for something, at least three, four times a month, I walk into my building over there and there's Fargo, West Fargo, Cass County, Clay County, law enforcement officers in the building, working with my people, planning a raid, planning an op-, a joint operation, we need a facility that will accommodate our part in the regional composition of what law enforcement does in the Cass-Clay area, and right now, we, we are sorely lacking for a lot of different things.
Mr. Chairman, we, we've also, you know, and you, and you, you can't, you can't be going about talking about a combined project like this without having a discussion about how you're gonna pay for it, and one of the, one of the interesting components of that is, is working with our county auditor and the what's-wand disposition-
Finance director.
Finance director with the city of Morehead and with our finance committee, you know, it's no secret now that we've been talking about a referendum on a half cent sales tax that would help in this, and, and we believe that if, if the voters accept that as a, as a way to help pay for this, that we should be able to construct this thing with little to no increase in, in property tax levies to our taxpayers, that, you know, that is, that's extremely important, and, and unfortunately, you know, the jails, it's gotta be built, and, and when you go along with that, we could see, we could see significant loss in cost savings by not doing the LEC now, and in addition, we would have to throw money away into that building to make it usable, and so it just financially, you know what, nobody wants to build a new jail, nobody wants to pay for it, nobody wants to build a new LEC, but we need them, and they're, they're part of what we have to have. Well, it looks like we got two facilities that need to be really be replaced, so it's, and I think the jail committee, you're well on your way in establishing that, so it's, I think we have to move forward on this and, excuse me.
I'm coming.
Go ahead.
Thank you, first of all, as a citizen and as a board member, I want to thank you both for the continued partnership that you have with your agencies and Bill, as well as the other countywide agencies, I think it's a very important thing, I think it's efficient, as, as the chief has said, and you're able to do a lot of work together as well as across the river, however, being a member of this board, it's appropriate, as you are with your own budgets, to look at how we pay for our wants and how we separate our needs and our wants, and I think it's important that we continue to look at this as one project, I agree, I think it's important that, that a law enforcement center be built, my concern lies with the staging of that, for instance, Morehead Public Schools wanted the, the package deal, they wanted the new elementary schools, they wanted the new high school, but they were very careful what was put on the referendum, and as that passed, then now they're making a quick work to approach what that second piece of the referendum would be if they go for the new high school like they, they want, so my concern is, as our sales tax revenue was forecasted for a little less than half of what we were thinking it would be, that clearly extends the need for the sales tax and the length, and I'm worried about the advantage that Clay County has with our neighbor, and so if we need to look at the jail being part of the sales tax and then we need to, within two years, this is, this is short term, I'm not saying that we, we sit in, in waterfall rooms for, for ten years, but at the point when we're, we have to figure out how to pay for it, I, I think that that would be in our best interest, it's important to kinda have that break check, if, if we had a, a bid come in on the line, the jail and it came in five million dollars more, then do we just keep adding to that pot, my concern, as I've voiced before, is that we're going to ask for this huge pot in a sales tax and the community feels, they've advocated for this new jail for ten years, is that what you said, you've been working on that for ten years, and the dialogue that I've had with community leaders and members is that, the new jail, we've gotta build a new jail, we've gotta build a new jail, so, less than a year before the referendum, all of a sudden, we're adding another project to what that would be, I think it causes community members to kinda wonder how, how do you pay for it, and, and so I'm not, and I'm not discrediting the work that your detectives and officers go through, I'm not, I'm not saying that that is, it needs to be acceptable, I'm not saying that in any way, but what I am saying is I have serious concerns with how we're gonna pay for it, you know, and, and two, to go along, if, if we're talking parking, we just had a, a all-day retreat with our department heads, and one of the biggest concerns that every staff member has here is parking, I mean, that's parking, and, and you heard it and I've heard it and everyone's heard it, so if we're moving the jail forward twelve to fifteen feet to accommodate for a couple parking spots, I, I thought the plan all along was that we had, we were acquiring property to the north of the county courthouse to have a temporary parking lot while that gets built, and then onto the second phase to where we build the law enforcement center there.
Well, I think that was part of the discussion when, you know, when we started, but in order to, you know, and, and one of the things we looked at, of course, was just moving- to, you know, and, and one of the things we looked at, of course, was just moving the jail to an entirely different location. But in terms of, of costs, it's, it, it became apparent that it was much more cost-effective to keep the jail facility on campus and to meet our needs. The law enforcement center, besides the condition it's in, and the cost it would take to upgrade it, like Commissioner Campbell was saying, we, we'd still have to be in a situation where we can't complete the jail project the way we want. And all of our discussions, you know, and, and in terms of paying for it, that's what the jail finance committee is, is doing, is, is working with the people that are involved in financing these issues to come up with the right solution so we can pay for it in, in the most cost-effective manner. And so, I think, you know, we've, you know, we've tried to address those issues that Commissioner Mojo has, has talked about, and I think, I think we've, we're, we're almost there in terms of how we're going to pay for this in the most cost-effective manner. And, and, in, in, in the, in the long run, it, it's more cost-effective from all the information we have to, to complete the jail, and at some point during the jail construction project to initiate the law enforcement center project, because the construction managers who manage these things under, you know, have told us that it, it will, it will save us money to do it that way. And so, we, we could, you know, if we did wait, we would probably have to change, you know, what we think should be done with the jail, and then we would have to change those things and correct them maybe two years later and start the law enforcement center. So I think in terms of what benefits taxpayers, what we're looking at will be more effective.
Wayne?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. What you just said, the construction managers said it would be more cost-effective to do both. Committee seems to think so. And Chief, when it comes to the law enforcement center, would the city be paying for most of that out of their dollars as opposed to county dollars, or is that more of a committee question?
Let me, let me try to answer that.
Well, I'll give it to Chief House.
We, we will be going to the, to the city council on the fourteenth to present this. Our finance director's been working with the finance committee to work out the city paying its share of this and how we're gonna proceed with that. I would, I would not be the guy to give you the financial details on that. I do know that it's being worked on.
Thank you. Kim?
Yeah, the, the, the current proposal that's come out from the finance committee is that both of these structures would be built and owned by Clay County. The law enforcement center.
That's coming out of committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's coming out of committee that, and that the city of Morehead would then rent or enter into a lease agreement. That's, that's the discussion that we're gonna be going to the Morehead City Council with. And this has been, had been talked about with the previous city manager and the finance person, and we have, we have members of the, a member of the Morehead Council that's been on, on this board, and I've talked to other council members, so they know it's coming. But the, the proposal would be that, that they would rent, and I think Lori's got it worked out, where, where they would end up paying the same square footage payment that anybody else rents from us would do. In addition, they would have an, the annual operations and maintenance responsibility for their share, which is, we're estimating that to be, I think, about two hundred and forty thousand a year, I think, isn't it?
Four fifty total.
Two, four, yeah, four fifty total, but about, so about two fifty is.
Operation.
Operation and maintenance.
Excuse me.
And, but, but then, yes.
Well, we would eventually look at selling or, I mean, sharing the building later on, but this would be.
No, this would, there wouldn't.
That would be a permanent thing.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a, a lease with option to buy tied to it.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, so then, with that, Morehead, the city of Morehead also had, did have a significant investment into the original building. And so upfront, part of the deal is, is where we would be giving them a little bit upfront credit, because they, they put in, I think it was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars into the current facility that, that they should get some sort of credit on moving forward. But when it, when it goes to how to pay for it, right now, with the board's act, previous actions of, of committing seventy-five percent of our future retired debt that's coming up, between that, and, and this is ba- this is based on a, a thirty-seven million dollar jail project and a, is it twelve million?
Thirty-seven, five for the jail, and twelve, five, fourteen, five for the law enforcement center, but that includes the land.
Yeah, and that, and that includes the land, the land purchases. With the, with the money that we have, the seventy-five percent retirement, the lease money that we would receive from the city, the levy dollars that we've basically committed to in our plan going forward, and then the wind energy of a hundred and fifty, we, and then, and then with the half-cent sales tax, we believe that those dollars, and, and when we say the sales tax collected, we're talking about maintaining as though we're gonna only collect that same amount every year for the next twenty years, when we know we should be getting more. But we're being very conservative in, in the, in the sales tax projection dollars. We find, we've, based on those numbers, and Lori, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but based on those numbers, we will have adequate dollars to pay for both the principal and interest on this project for a, for a twenty-year time span. The one, the one thing that, that I did not ask is what they had put in for the interest rate when they calculated that.
I'm not really sure. I used the actual interest rate for the ten million that we've already.
Okay.
Issued, and then they had estimated, and they were almost seventy-five basis points high on their.
Now, but now, keep, keep in mind now, it's, there's a couple of other things here. When we, when we talked about this, when the board originally did this, we committed to this seventy-five percent, what, two or three years ago, I think, is when we committed to that, Brian? And, you know, so, so if the question is asked, well, what if the jail ends up being five million dollars more, or the LEC gets to be a little bit more, well, one of the things you do is you go back to them and you say, okay, what can we, we're, we're doing it as we speak. We, we talked to.
Change orders cost money, though.
No, no, but.
That's what, that's what you're saying, a change order costs.
No, but we're reducing. We're reducing. So for, for example, we asked, we asked the jail right now, do you have, right now there's incorporated in there to have a, a, a workout room or fitness room? And there's gonna, there's gonna be a new one right in the LEC. So what, so we, so we said, why would we need both? Can we take the fitness room out of, out of the correctional facility and have all the employees use the other one? Those are the things you can still do. There's ways you can cut back. We talked about a certain agent, by the way, we also have other rental people that are gonna be in the law enforcement center that we're not even including the revenues from those rental agencies yet. So, you know, so there's other things that are, are helping us in that regard. And in terms of the, even the, even the law enforcement center, just at the very last meeting, we, we basically said, there's one tenant we don't think really needs to be in, I'm not gonna name the tenants right now, but there's one that we were planning on five thousand square feet for, and we thought that maybe they could be more appropriately put in the family service center, someplace like that. They didn't need to be in the LEC. So we, it won't necessarily cut the full size of the LEC by five thousand, but it can reduce it and make the plan work better, because they were trying to figure out where they're gonna do these things. This, we've got a, there, there is a financial plan, and yes, it can be paid for, based on what we have before us today.
Okay, just.
Yeah, I'd like to move this along. I think we, some would have to be said. What action are you looking for today in front of this board?
Well, I was, you know, I, I would make a motion that as a, we, we haven't done that as a commission, and like I say, I thought about this when we met with the Morehead Business Association last week, that, you know, I think we should show our, you know.
Okay.
Our intentions.
What's your motion?
As a commission, that, that I would make the motion that we support this project as one project, the jail or.
At this time.
Correctional facility and law enforcement center.
At this time.
Yes.
I second motion. Okay, Jenny?
What my statement is, is I do support it as one program. However, as I look at, in 2018, we have some significant dollars that are, bonding dollars that are maturing that are available. So what I am saying is I don't support the LEC being piggybacked onto the jail right now for the purpose of the vote in, in the fall. I feel as though we have made significant strides in putting dollars aside, and we can pay for the law enforcement center with those dollars. I would like to see the sales tax, or how, whatever the voters decide, go for the jail. So I would like to see separate avenues going forward on those. I just, my major concern is from farmers that I hear from that are paying up to sixty-four and seventy-five dollars an acre, and that's not feasible. It's, it's not feasible.
Then they should support the sales tax.
But what if, what if it doesn't? That's why I'm saying, that's not put everything together. That's not ask for the huge grand kahuna, everything that we want. Let's try and divide things apart and say, we're going to internally try to do what we can to pay for a jail, or the law enforcement center. But in the meantime, the jail is a go. The same thing that all of us have been saying at township meetings and business associations. We're gonna pay for the jail, it has to happen, whatever you decide in the fall is how we're gonna pay for it. All I'm saying is that separated a little bit, that's extended a year. I mean, I'm not, we're not pushing this back until my kids graduate from high school. I have this sheet, I looked at exactly what you're saying, I know. I'm just saying, let's be a little sensitive to what we're asking from the taxpayers.
Well, I don't think we're asking for anything different from the taxpayers. I mean, the fact.
Twelve million dollars more.
The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, the, the sales tax, if it passes, will be spent towards the correctional facility. You know, it's going to be a pool of money, and, and the, the sales tax itself would not be enough to pay for the jail. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the, the wordage on the, of the ballot will only be for thirty-seven million, or it will be for forty-nine million?
No, the verbiage on the ballot will be to, and Lori, you'll have.
Because when you cite the sales tax, you have to have a number.
You have to, you have to say what it's for.
Right, but you have to have a total dollar amount. You can't just keep, you can't change the dollar amount, right?
On the ballot question itself, there actually is no dollar amount?
There's no dollar amount of that.
It's just the project.
It's the project.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you for your insight.
Thank you.
For keeping us up to date on that. Dave, you're back up here again. We're talking about accepting a quote for the highway and the landfill shop site work. Dave, Van Eric, and Kirk here, we're discussing that.
Do we have that in front of us, Kevin?
Uh, I don't, yeah, there's a.
We've got cleanup week, I tell you, it's just getting crazy out there. Unbelievable.
Are you the one on the garbage truck, or what?
No, but we, we're open at the electronics, we had a hundred and forty-nine vehicles show up yesterday.
No kidding?
Hundred and forty-nine, unbelievable.
Wow. All right, very good, okay, let's go with this. Steve, go ahead.
Well, initially, we were looking at putting the other, you know, bid package, we're currently advertising for a new landfill highway shop. That did include site work, as well as some stripping of the topsoil. And in an effort to try to move this forward a little bit, we decided to, you know, acquire some quotes, just to see where it would come in, to just have a dirt contractor come in to start this work a little ahead of time while we're advertising for the building. And as you can see from the, my memo there, the, the quotes came in, I think, extremely well. We were, we were hoping for anywhere between, you know, eighty-five and ninety-five thousand, getting fairly close to the hundred thousand dollar mark, but a little bit under. And as you can see, we got a couple of them that were right under, a hundred and one over. We've worked with H&amp;S Contracting before. He did the grading job on County Road Nineteen, just north of Glendon. He's actively seeking out our bid package for the County Road Ninety-five job right now, too. And he's got, he's got a lot of, he's got a lot of availability right now. He said he's been second quite a few different times, so, leading to the fact of why he's a little hungry on the job. And his price came in at sixty-nine thousand, nine ninety-nine, which would include stripping out roughly eighty-five hundred yards of topsoil and bringing in about thirty to thirty-two thousand loose yards of fill material to build up the site for the building. Does that sound right, Eric?
Yeah, a little less borrow, I think, like twenty-five thousand, but anyways, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for H&amp;S.
Second. Kirk, did you have something to add to that, or?
No, no, Mr. Chairman. I think the highway department has done very well, coordinated this.
We never had a loss for words here.
Sorry.
All right, any further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? All right, thank you.
Just wanna make one note, maybe, maybe the reason why we did pull it out to take a look at prices is, we were trying to see if we could do it ourselves a little cheaper, and we talked about it and circled around it several different times. So we thought, well, let's just take a look and see where the quotes would come in to have it done. People that do this every day, and they have a little bigger equipment, a little, maybe a little more efficient than we are. So that's kinda why we looked at pulling this out, just to see if the prices wouldn't came in very good, we would either consider doing it ourself or putting it in the building bid itself. So that's kinda why we did that. And I think we found a real good solution right here. It'll get things moving a little quicker, and we still have a lot of work to do on the back end of this. We have those two properties that we need to move out of and sell, so I think by moving this ahead, it's gonna give us more time towards the end of the summer.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Tim, is Tim back in here? I saw you left, yeah, there you are, Tim, okay. Got a request to purchase archive and enhancement for caseworks. Tim Dendar, Technology Service Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like you said, we're, I'm here to request purchase of that enhancement for the caseworks project. If you remember, the, the caseworks is a, is a social services product that we host here at Clay County for eleven, eleven counties. This, this enhancement is an archiving module, which will allow us to archive cases out of caseworks and move them off to cheaper storage, or off to the cloud. What that allows it is, it shrinks our database up, and it increases the performance of our system, and it also will delay any expensive and equipment enhancements that we would have to make in the future. And this is being paid for by the funds that we collect from those eleven counties for our hosting fees each year.
So you say it would save us, it would save us money by doing this, then?
Well, the main thing is, is the performance increase that we're gonna have, 'cause it'll shield, these, this is a document management system, and all these documents are contained within the database, and those would get moved out, the cases that are, are closed that don't get used or looked at very often, but we still need to keep. And they can, they're still indexed within the system, and if they need to retrieve them, they're able to retrieve them, but they're not contained within the, the database of the system.
Okay, Jenny?
My, my question was in relation to the host fee. Approximately, how much does each county, Dave, that host?
We have two different tiers. We have, the larger counties pay seventy-five hundred dollars a year, and the smaller counties pay forty-five hundred dollars a year.
Significant.
Yeah. And a, a portion of those funds go towards the Clay County IT staffing, and the rest goes into an internal services fund for equipment replacement and enhancements.
Which is how you're asking to pay for this?
Correct.
I'd move approval of the request.
How's that?
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passed. Go for it.
Thank you.
Kathy, request for additional staff for detox. Kathy McKay and Troy Allenson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We did talk a little bit about this at the board meeting, when we were talking about We did talk a little bit about this at the board meeting when we were talking about our, our bed increase, but today, we're just gonna request one position. We have a twenty-four hour tech position that's open. We have a tech that previously has a lot of experience in detox, previously worked in, in the detox unit. Spent off on medical leave, has worked variable hour now in public health as support staff. So we have a person that we can move into that position. We'd like to do the thirty-two hour week in, well, actually she'd be a, of one full-time employee. We can utilize her in public health a little bit for the support staff and then we have hours in our detox budget for a point eight, thirty-two hours a week. So the request is really to move her from variable hour to full-time. And she may eventually end up one FTE in, in our detox, but for now it'll be thirty-two hours a week and point eight in public health.
Mr. Chair. Move to approve as presented by Kathy. Second.
The, the funding for this, you said that increased referrals from Fargo and Otter Tail County will increase revenues with additional referrals, right? So, do you anticipate the revenues to offset the cost of, of the employment?
We do. When we met with the Fargo facility and talked about the increase in sixteen bed, they're very confident they'll have a lot more referrals that will fill that. Troy and I will also be meeting with Otter Tail next week.
A week from today.
Week from today. And so we'll be talking about their utilization of our detox as well.
Cause ultimately, you're gonna be back here, if I read this right, you're gonna be back here for more.
We, we may need more as we, as we move into the sixteen bed. We may need more staff, additional staff to cover, you know, the additional needs with those clients.
Mr. Chair, and if I recall, Kathy made that clear, regarding the sixteen beds.
Correct, right. Any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion passed. Out-of-home placement expenditures and revenue transit.
Yes, good morning.
In our social services department. Rhonda Porter, thank you.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, Commissioner Campbell, you had asked about maybe a five-year history showing some of the trends for out-of-home placements, costs and placements. So in your packet, I did supply some information and I can just go over a little bit about what that all is. So the, the first line, I went back to two thousand and six and partly because I wanted to capture some of the issues we were experiencing in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when we were addressing some of the meth issues in our community. So the information goes back to two thousand and six. So the first line there on the grid shows what our actual expenditures were for all of our out-of-home placements that are the county responsibility of Clay County. So you'll see in two thousand and six, it's a little over two point four million and for twenty fifteen, actual, it went to three million. And it kind of goes up and down in between those years. The second line there shows you the revenue that we collected to offset those expenditures. And as you can see, that revenue goes up and down as well. We collect various revenues and it's, those revenues are very unpredictable because it depends on the child's eligibility for some of the federal revenue and it depends on the eligibility of the facility. It depends on if the child has social security, for example, that we can collect to offset the cost of care. So it's a real challenge sometimes to predict what our revenues will be. So that's why I added another line that indicates what percent are we collecting in revenue as it relates to our expenditures as a way to help guide some of the budgeting process. One of the comments I'd like to make, if you look at twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, you'll notice in twenty fourteen, our actual revenues were only eighteen percent as it relates to the expenditures. Some of the revenue that we got in twenty fifteen were actually from expenditures in twenty fourteen. So it was some timing, some timing and collection of that. So that's why our twenty fifteen revenues look a little bit higher. The net effect on the levy then, the yellow line in the middle there, is really the amount then, you know, the expenditures less the revenues that we brought in and what the net effect of, on the levy is for out-of-home placements. So you'll notice we went up quite a bit in twenty fifteen. The problem is, is that we, the net that we budgeted for twenty fifteen was one point seven million and the net that we spent was close to two point three. So we were almost six hundred thousand over expenditures in twenty fifteen. And actually, that would show up to be more like eight hundred thousand if the revenue that we collected in twenty fifteen was attributed to the right year, which it would've went over into twenty fourteen. So we've got concern there. Our twenty sixteen, I am just absolutely sick to say, our first quarter, our placements are still very, very high. And we projected out, if we were to continue at the rate of spending for out-of-home placements that we are for the first quarter of twenty sixteen, we would be around three point nine million. I, these placements are absolutely, and they're, they're, they're court ordered, they're, you know, have the oversight of the court.
When you talk out-of-home replacements, what does that include? The children's foster homes or?
It's all children, foster homes. It's our West Central. It's all of the placements at the non-secure side of West Central. It's all of our kids in county foster homes, therapeutic homes. It's all of our kids. We have some kids at Malax Academy that are there for extended periods of time for sex offending behaviors. We have kids in residential mental health facilities. The needs...
How many kids are we talking about?
Yesterday, we had a hundred and, we have a hundred and seventy-one kids in care yesterday. And over the course of time, so you'll see the, the kind of fifth line down there, it says unduplicated number of kids in placement. So two seventy-two was all of the activity for twenty fifteen. So if you consider today, we have a hundred and seventy-one. You know, we have kids in and out of care, you know, some for short periods of time and were able to successfully reunify or they moved to permanency. But you can see how that number has increased as well. So I'm very, I'm very concerned. And I think we budgeted for twenty sixteen, we added a hundred thousand into the budget for twenty sixteen, so we'd still only be budgeting about one point eight, one point eight and a half million for twenty sixteen and our trend is really, I haven't seen it this high.
It's all in your hands, it's all in our hands.
You know, it is. We're trying all kinds of efforts that we can put in place to, you know, keep kids safe in their homes or if, if we look to place children with their relatives, they have to be licensed and that still is a cost in terms of payment. But we're working with all of our stakeholders to address the issues and put in as much prevention as we can. But the cases that we're seeing come in are quite significant and we've, we've had our state involved in some of our screening. We consult with our county attorney's office all the time. I think Jenny can speak to that. And the kids that are in placement are kids that need to be in placement, as terrible as it is.
How old do we keep, if they're, they're eighteen years old, do we still have the placement or what?
Yep, yep, we have, we have some kids that are in placement up to twenty-one. The statute allows for that to happen and, and requires counties to address that if they're in school, if they're still in school, we can keep them in till they're twenty-one. That's a small percentage, but we've, we've placed infants out of the hospital.
Mr. Chair. One of the things that comes out of both of the local advisory councils for children's mental health and adult mental health is the difficulty in finding places to place these children. Some of them are way beyond Clay County and that's an additional expense. Thank you. That's sad.
Are there, Rhonda, are there counties in our area trending this way also?
Yes, anecdotally, we're seeing it across the state and mental health is, is just extremely, we're seeing a lot of mental health issues. And across the state, counties are struggling with finding placements and they are having to place out of our state and we're continually calling the Department of Human Services, advocating for better state support for these placements. I think you'll hear after the break about our foster homes, but we, some of the, the work that the staff do in finding, trying to find placements, you can spend weeks, eight hours a day, ten hours a day. And some of these kids, their needs are so high that placement facilities are turning it down because they have waiting lists. So they don't need to take a child that has aggressive, you know, tendencies that need three staff on them when they've got a waiting list of, you know, twenty kids that are, you know, not as hard to serve. So we are really struggling. I'm just really concerned about what we're seeing.
This, I agree with you, Rhonda, this is, it's, it's really troubling. It's, you know, to put this in perspective, this, this is almost ten percent of the amount of our levy. Almost ten, ten percent of our total, what we go out and assess our, our taxpayers at Clay County has to go to, and I, I, don't get me wrong, I, but two hundred and seventy kids. Think about that.
Ten be more.
Ten percent of our levy is, is going to them. And it's, it's not, it's not the kids, it's the cost of the care that, that, I don't understand it and, you know, if there's any, anybody who should have some involvement with this, it should be the state.
Absolutely.
Helping us and I, you know, this is one thing that maybe we need to scream a little bit louder as counties, to our legislatures that, you know, the courts are, are making these decisions and I'm sure they're making decisions based on recommendations from whether it's the county attorney's office or whether it's, it's Health and Human Services, but it's for the better protection of, of those kids and the public. I, I get, I get that. I get that, but should we as a community have to be spending ten percent of all of our funds on this issue? And I, I just find that extremely frustrating and difficult to swallow.
Yeah, it's very, it's very troubling and even our, I know the governor legislated a mental health task force just this last week. And I think, you know, counties are just up in arms and, and calling to the commissioner level about these concerns and this inability to find placement facilities. And when they get into placement facilities who, who, you know, many think, oh, this is the cat's meow, they're gonna be able to meet this child's needs and within a few weeks are saying, we can't meet the needs, you gotta get them out. That's what we're seeing. That is what we're seeing and, so it's, it's very concerning. So sorry to deliver such a, a note, but...
But it's not, it's not completely out of our hands. The mandates are and unfortunately, we have to help them. And for me, to help two hundred and seventy children, I understand that it's an enormous amount, but I would think that there's no better cause to, to help is to help children. And it just helps us to understand how great it is to support these other programs that we do to empower families and help get kids out of poverty. And so, yeah, there is a, a piece that's out of our hands, but really as community leaders, we should be putting our heads together and think, what, what more can we do to help the, help those that are functioning at a great level and help continue to support them so it, it doesn't get to that dangerous level.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we have some kind of ideas that, you know, again, we've implemented things over the years and we've got a lot of, the county does support funds for services like in-home services where we can have therapists or family skills for young moms that are learning how to parent and go into the homes to provide those services. We have a, a host of, I think, systems in place to, to help and to reduce risks so that kids can remain in their home and we can make some, some impact. We have some other things that we've been talking about in terms of bringing in some expertise to work with our staff that I'm gonna be looking at in the next couple months. That transition house with West Central, that's kind of been floated around a little bit. We talked more about it yesterday. I think that having an, a facility or an opportunity like that in our community can help as well because it's one of those programs where we would not have to look at placing out of our county. You know, that's another thing that adds to the cost. These are...
That's huge.
Yeah, these are actually costs of what we pay for the placement. Doesn't have anything to do with the cost of staff on the road, the cost of, you know, mileage and traveling all over the state and supervised visitations and getting parents to see their children.
Just give an example of a daily per diem, some of these instances when you have to send them out.
Well, the, we just had a little guy, a ten-year-old at a facility in Colorado and that was three hundred and seventy dollars a day.
Three hundred and seventy dollars a day.
I just got a ten thousand dollar bill for one month. And they could not serve him. They said, you gotta get him out. He was in the hospital, he went there in October. He was in the hospital, I wanna say, four times. The worker endless hours searching for a facility in Minnesota, endless hours on the phone with the State Department of Human Services, in and out of the hospital from that facility in Colorado. We finally, two weeks ago, I think, got him placed at a facility here in Minnesota and I'm very concerned that that's not going to last.
No, I think, I think when you look at this and, cause this was very troubling back in two thousand and eight as well.
Yeah.
And that's when we saw that spike. And if you look in two thousand and eight, you know, we had, you know, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we were, our levy was around two million there. And, and we collectively as a community, and this goes to kind of what Commissioner Mojo was saying, did some things as a community that really made it more difficult to have meth around or, or to be able to produce meth and, and have all these meth farms. And, you know, that obviously played a role in children's behavior, you know, being around those. And look what happened in two thousand and nine. Our number went down to one point five million. So, so there are things that can be done. You know, the, the idea of all these other preventative programs that we do, they're significant and they're important. And that's where a lot of people misunderstand, well, why, why are you, why are you funding these things? You know, the common person on the seat, well, why, why is so much going to social services or what have you? And the fact of the matter is, is, is it's the cheapest alternative to prevention.
Absolutely.
And, and it can be more costly if you don't do it. But having said that, I, I am not happy seeing this at, at three million dollars in two thousand and fifteen and hearing three point nine million in, in two thousand and sixteen. To me, it's telling us we're failing. It's telling us, it's telling me we're failing. It means we're getting more and more, keep people in more and more costs going into this. And so somebody's gotta help us here to figure out how, how, what preventions can we put in place for these issues that are making this go to three point nine million? Because, because it's, it's at a pace that's not sustainable.
Right.
It's not sustainable.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. I think, you know, anecdotally, what we're seeing in most of those cases are the mental health, the chemical health, combination of both, some chronic neglect issues and a lot of that relates to the mental health and chemical health as well. We are seeing, I think, that our demographics in our community are changing. I think bordering Fargo, North Dakota, they're seeing substantial increases like we are as well. So I think we're seeing families in our community, larger families move into our community that are struggling.
Well, thank you for that update.
Update, yes. You're gonna hear a lot about mental health today as May is Mental Health Month, so we have a host of presenters that are gonna talk with you about what is happening in our community for, with mental health and we have... our community for, with mental health, and we have some experts that can kind of speak to that as well, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for the visit.
You guys want a break?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a short break. Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order. And next thing on agenda, that May is Fosters Care Appreciation Month. With that, we'll bring Amy Amundson and Gail Bernside.
Well, thanks very much for having us, we just wanted to come and just say thank you to all the homes in Clay County for being foster homes that provide care for our kids that have to go into care. We currently have 55 licensed homes in Clay County alone. Seventeen of those 55 homes are relatives, who we will place children with aunts or uncles, grandma or grandpas, and get them licensed for foster care as well. And some of those homes have ended up becoming permanent foster homes after their grandkids were reunified, or, so have continued to provide care for our children. And we currently have 96 children in Clay County foster homes. So of that 171, we have 96 in Clay County homes.
Can some of those homes, excuse me, can some of those homes, they can take more than one child?
Yep, yep, some will take, you know, we've seen a big trend in large sibling groups, that's been our latest, where there are six kids who need to be placed into, or four kids, five kids, so in some of those situations, we have to separate those kids and put three in one foster home or three in another foster home. So that's kind of been the trend, that we've seen a lot, larger sibling groups, where it used to be just one or two, two children that needed to be placed. And then we've seen a significant amount of newborn babies that have had to go into foster care placement, so then, you know, a lot of the foster homes that we have, they work full-time, and so then it's finding daycare, or they will make adjustments with their work schedule to stay at home with the baby because the baby is too young to even go into daycare, because we're having to place those babies right from the hospital.
I'm, you know, I just want to add that I'm overwhelmed at the generosity of the foster parents that we have. I can call them, you know, I get a phone call, 9:00 AM, that we're gonna place some kiddos, and I call these foster homes, and they're just willing to drop everything in their schedule and their lives to say, yes, we'll do it, we'll handle it, and the generosity is just amazing of the homes that we have. We're always looking, always recruiting, visiting with folks, so anybody in the community that is even interested in foster care, I am happy to talk to them and sit down with them and talk to them about what it's about and how they can help.
Mr. Chair, I think that also speaks very highly of you two ladies and the entire staff. And Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the proclamation recognizing Clay County foster parents for foster care appreciation.
Is our procedure to read this?
I think that would be most appropriate.
Okay. Whereas the family servant is the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem and support, is the very foundation of our community, and whereas foster parents provide an invaluable service to the children, youth and families of Clay County, and whereas foster parents give generously of themselves to provide nurturing, safety, guidance, hope and love in a safe, secure and stable home, and whereas the foster parents recognize the opportunity to help a child or youth and their family in ways that will influence them for the remainder of their lives, and whereas foster kingship and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts to children play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect thereby, launching young people into successful adulthood, and whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resolving a greater need for more foster families, and whereas Foster Care Appreciation Month in Clay County is an appropriate time to thank the families who embrace the opportunity of providing a home and family to children in need of affection, love and security. Now therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Clay County, and we call upon all our citizens to recognize the contributions made by our foster families throughout our county. We also urge all citizens to come forward and do something positive that will help change the life of children and youth in foster care. Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll call for the vote, all in favor? All in. Thanks to those, all I can say is, you know, the need is obviously there, I mean, from what we heard this morning, and so, all I can say is, hooray for Clay County foster care parents, so.
You know, and they take these, they've even done mentoring, they mentor these parents getting these kids back home, they invite them in their homes for holidays so they can spend holiday with their kids, so they really do amazing work.
Very good.
Thanks.
And with that, we'll go on to Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council Annual Update and Proclamation. Allison Olbeck and Ben Eery.
And John Doe.
And John Doe.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, if I may, Allison and Ben are our co-chairs of the Local Advisory Council on Adult Mental Health, and John Gilbert is a consumer, very dedicated member of the Advisory Council.
Oh, okay, so thank commissioners, the first thing that we did, we did write a letter from the chairs to the commissioners, so we want to thank you for your ongoing support to really accomplish our mission, which is, the local advisory council, or the local Adult Mental Health Advisory Council's mission is to advise and educate the county board on unmet needs of adults with mental illness and their families in Clay County, to review and evaluate the continuum of services for adults with mental illness, to provide public education and awareness on mental illness, and to promote mental health in Clay County, and then other duties, and then you see all the statutes. So, do you want to move on to the recommendations?
Throughout the year, we have providers that come to the meetings and give updates on their services, as well as consumers giving input either at the meeting or through our annual survey. From this information that we've gathered throughout the year, we have two recommendations. One is, the medical assistance, MA, income guidelines have not increased at the same rate as Social Security Disability, SSDI, cost of living increases. Currently, there are individuals who only qualify for Medicare due to their disability income. The Clay County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council recommends to investigate ways for individuals who do not qualify for medical assistance to receive similar MA reimbursed services. Effect of this change would be to increase utilization of rehabilitative and case management services for individuals who do not qualify for MA, will allow individuals more timely and effective utilization of community-based services, and will decrease the likelihood of them utilizing a higher level of care.
Yeah, so, with this, what we find is, there are a number of support services especially that are specifically MA-built services that Medicare does not pay for, so adult, mental health rehab is a good example, adult targeted case management is another one, and then also, within mental health, there are certain provider classes, if it's certain therapists, that if someone only has Medicare, they're not a qualified provider under that service, so. So we are seeing this, this has been a continued issue over the past two years, that a number of consumers have brought to the Advisory Council.
Mr. Chair, the recommendation is to investigate ways for individuals who do not qualify. I'm going to ask that our county administrator through the Social Services Department, look into this, and get back to us in a timely fashion with a report that we can pass on to the chairs of the Advisory Council. Is that okay with the board?
Okay. So health insurance doesn't cover any of this stuff either, that you're talking about?
A lot of these people don't have help.
Yeah, so, a lot of, what we're talking about is the group of individuals that make, that fall into this gap between, they will qualify for Medicare, given they have Social Security or given a specific disability, but their Medicare payment makes them ineligible for medical assistance. So there are certain programs, there are certain levels of care, there are certain specific services that Medicare will not reimburse.
And because they have Medicare, they can't have MA?
Because they have, because they have a, their Social Security and/or other income is over the Medicaid threshold, they do not qualify for MA.
So, so I see one of the recommendations is to look at changing that threshold, is that correct, am I reading that correct? Where you're, because it says here, the MA income guidelines have not increased at the same rate as Social Security, so that's a state and federal issue, isn't it?
Yeah, I think what we're looking at though is investigate alternative funding sources or alternative ways where these individuals may be able to receive the same or similar services through a different, if it's a different funding source, or specific dollars set aside for these individuals, so.
Well, you're talking about different funding sources, I mean, what are you, you're talking about the county coming up with different funding sources?
Well, I mean, the county's one option, the other option would be looking at a collaboration, if it's certain, if it's the county and certain providers writing a grant together, just identifying some different ways to kind of meet that need. So it wouldn't necessarily be completely county dollars, so. I'm not holding out my hat yet. The second thing is, so what we've also noticed is, second page. Okay, so currently, Lakeland is the only county-based provider, actually, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, I'll just go from here. Over the last year, mental health providers have been reporting waiting list numbers for case management, adult rehabilitative mental health services, adult psychiatry, and adult psychotherapy. Waiting lists for case management and ARMS at Lakeland have been averaging 38 and 33 respectively. A portion of these individuals desire keeping their services at Lakeland, while some may be in need of income-based sliding fee scale that is offered through the contract with Clay County. So Lakeland has a contract with the county to be able to provide services based on income. Patient choice is an important part of mental health recovery. With the current system in place, individuals are forced to work with a particular provider if they need the benefit of the sliding fee. The demands for these services in Clay County are continually increasing, and provider growth, as well as workforce demands, makes it very difficult to keep pace. The Clay County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council recommends a voucher-based system for receiving income-based sliding fee services is researched and implemented, as well as appropriate incentives are offered to providers who wish to expand their services.
I do want to comment on that because I am the board's lead on to the Lakeland board, and that is something that we have agency-wide, there's just, you know, Ron and I have meetings about it, we have severe waiting lists, and so, I appreciate what you're doing. Lakeland is also trying to investigate how to further offer more providers, but part of the problem too is, is there's a lot of no-shows, and then that's the piece that we're trying to figure out, is how do we, how do we minimize the amount of no-shows on those appointments?
I imagine a lot of the other providers in the area do have that no-show, so maybe them collaborating with other providers would help come up with ideas on how to address that problem.
John, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just basically talking about the rehabilitation, mental health services stuff, I've had a couple of different agencies, worked with a couple of different agencies, me personally, I've taken everything under one house, I deal with Lakeland as far as everything now. I would not, I would actually like to see more agencies possibly open up for getting some of these wait lists come down, even for case management as well, and other psychotherapy and even psychiatry, because that is a big concern around here.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I believe we need a motion for member list approval, is that correct?
Yes.
Page is our number, but I believe it's page four, I move the member list for approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All in.
Both.
John also has a story to share.
Very good.
Just to kind of further along, the, with the ARMS services and case management services I receive, it just kind of goes to show that if you take the time to commit to doing, to doing these appointments, that you can certainly further your life along and try to make it If you were to know me 10 years ago, chances are, I might not be as a more talkative guy about mental health as I am today. But it just, it helps me to sit here and say that with what's going on today in my life, that it helps that there are services here, here that can, that are being provided that can help people try to further their life along.
I may say, Mr. Chair, what I was teaching, which was 100 years ago, John was not a student of mine, but he was off to school at the same time, and he has come very long way in the several years I've been on the Local Advisory Council, he has really developed into one of our most valuable consumers on the council. Thank you, John, for your sharing with us and for what you do.
Mr. Chair. Well, Allison is here, I also want to thank you for your involvement on our jail mental health advisory committee, you offered some great insight as we worked through the development of that, and I am happy to say that the jail is leading the state in part of what we're doing to address mental health needs, and your input was very valuable, thank you.
Thank you, that's excellent.
The last thing is, some reading the mental health proclamation, is that being approved?
Do I have that?
I don't see it here.
Okay, our Clay County proclamation on mental health, whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental illnesses, and where there is a strong vibe of research that supports specific tools that all individuals in our communities can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens shares the burden of mental illnesses and has the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support for mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, the Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and May 5, 2016, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Clay County, Minnesota. We will call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Clay County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps of our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all our children and adults with mental illness.
I think we need a motion, Jenny.
Oh, make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see that Ned is here, and as I said before, it is among my favorite things to do is recognize our employees. Annette there. She has spent fifteen years with us for her service, and Shelley, any words to say about Annette? Yes, you do. Thank you.
All good things. Just thank her for the fifteen years she's put in probation department. She comes in with a smile on her face every day and keeps us organized and running smoothly.
Smile is... smile is a huge... She's got us all smiling. Very good. Well, thank you very much for your service to Clay County.
Yes, I intended to do that.
Very good. Thank you, Shelley.
Yes, thank you.
Who's that? Carolyn Stenart?
Sternard.
Sternard. Sterner.
Sternard.
With that Carolyn.
Carolyn.
We'll jump forward. And you brought with...
Melissa Veren, the co-chair.
Okay, Melissa, thank you for being here.
Kevin.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us here today to do our annual report and for approving our proclamation for Mental Health Month, as well as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And as we share our report with you today, I will reference back to the proclamation that was just approved when we talk about really needing our community and all of our entities involved in working together to address mental health in our communities. So, the LAC meetings, and we're very grateful that Wayne is able to attend them. He's been a faithful member of our LAC, and we appreciate his input and his vision as well. It has been really a wealth of conversations throughout the whole year with all of our partners, and you will see on our membership list, the partners that we have involved in our LAC, it's quite varied and encompasses most of the services here within our county. We have talked about many of the challenges and some of those you heard today. Our mission for our LAC is to promote an accessible, comprehensive, and unified mental health delivery system within Clay County. The green brochure that I just passed out is kind of our recruitment brochure that we use to get folks to join our LAC, and so it lists our duties of the LAC. We just finished celebrating our twenty-fifth year last year as a local advisory council, and we did lots of different activities. But as our conversations have gone over the last year, we've had some really good feedback from our providers, and I know that you've heard some of it today in visiting with Rhonda. But just to kind of review some of those current challenges that we're seeing, the children that the agencies are seeing now have significantly more complex mental illnesses and needs than we've ever seen before. And some of you know that I've been at this table a lot of years, and even I am just astounded by some of the mental health needs that we're seeing in the kids that our agencies are trying to serve. They have required a lot more higher level of those skilled interventions. Agencies across the board have been experiencing an increase in referrals, whether it's a school looking for an assessment on a child, or our mental health services, our case management, our diagnostic assessments, all of those things. CTSS, which is kind of like the ARMS, adult workers, all of those have seen an increase in needs and referrals. And some of that comes from the high out-of-placement numbers. There's always a ripple effect. One of the ripple effects from having a high placement number is that those foster homes that we were using to provide respite for our children are not able to take kids because they're full. And so, we're seeing a decrease in the space for respite for some of our children at a time when we're seeing an increase in that need for respite. And respite is one of those strategies, as you talked about earlier, in reducing that out-of-home placement. If we can give families a break from their child and the child a break from the family dynamics as well, we can, you know, hopefully put off that out-of-home placement pieces. Transportation, we've brought that to you every year. We've done some substantial conversations, and we've tried to address transportation. I want to say that it's a little bit... it's a little bit better. You know, I think I probably will retire from this position before we get a North-South Road, but I'll just have to live with that. But we know that many of the families are relying on their case managers for some of that transportation, which again adds to the load of the work of those folks. So, when we look at our priorities, and I know Commissioner Campbell, you said earlier when talking about Rhonda's numbers, that it appears that we're failing. And I would say that we're not failing. We've got a system that is working really, really hard to meet the needs of these kids, really, really hard. And some of you may know that I also coordinate the Clay County Collaborative, and so I organize many meetings, many problem-solving groups, and the overwhelming, you know, people at the table care really a lot about these kids, and they're trying to work really hard to meet their needs. But the sheer number, and as I said earlier, the complex needs of these kids is really wearing them out and stressing them out, and I see that in their faces. I see that in the conversations that we have around the table. And, you know, like I tell my kids, you know, we... you know what you know when you know it, and if you don't know it, you can't do anything about it. And so, when you look at our priorities that you... that we have on our board report for you today, we talk a lot about building that infrastructure to address that childhood trauma. And childhood trauma is not something new. It's been going on for a lot of years. It was happening when I adopted my daughter Sarah out of the foster care system back in the nineteen nineties. So, it's been around, but there is so much more information right now about trauma and what can we do to build resiliency in these kids, and also about that secondary trauma that staff deal with when they are working with such intensive kids. And so, we are hoping, and the LAC has really been a springboard in their conversations for the collaborative and for other groups, but within that Children's LAC as well. And I know that Rory will be up here in a little bit talking to you about rethink mental health, but we really want to stress the need in our second bullet about building that infrastructure to address the childhood trauma. We need that early intervention piece. We need the prevention piece. We need all of those things. And so, will we... if we put all of those things into place, will we see an immediate reduction in out-of-home? Probably not. But will we see it over time? Yes, we will. But it's going to take, as we said in the proclamation, our whole community and all of our providers. It's going to take the county. It's going to take our school systems as well. And then, really, we need to be looking at trying to increase the number of mental health professionals that can do some of that early childhood work. We're talking about kids from birth to three, attachment work, all of those pieces of early childhood. Our wait times are still incredibly high for some of our psychiatric appointments, and I know that we have... our case management is pretty much full all of the time. We do sometimes have a waiting list for CTSS services, so... and sometimes we have a list, a waiting list for in-home, but I think we're working really hard to meet some of those needs. Well, the other part of our report is listing our activities that we have been a part of in the last year. As always, we appreciate when Social Services comes in and does an update on their budget, and Amy Amundson has been very good at attending our meetings as well to talk about what they're seeing and their placement numbers. We had a really good conversation in meeting this past February with our school officials, talking about just that school-based mental health programming and what they're seeing, and they again are reporting those complex needs. We're going to be facilitating a meeting this afternoon on the school-based mental health programming that's out there. We had a wonderful networking lunch. You have received in your packet our updated Who Do I Call brochure, which is posted around the communities and the schools and is also on our county website. We also, as we talk about some of those new strategies, that I'm hoping that we can engage our mental health partners here, as well as the county social services, is a new program that's coming out from the state called Family Peer Specialist Program, and we had someone here from the Minnesota Association of Children's Mental Health to talk about that program, and we are continuing to work with them to hope to find some funding that we can do a pilot project or get it started here in Clay County. Family Peer Specialists would... will work directly with those families that are entering into that children's mental health system and kind of walk with them. So, it's kind of a parenting help. It's a mentoring help. It's also will hopefully reduce some of the work that some of the case managers will have to do because that person can be a support, and that program is completely funded through the state, so I won't even put out my head asking for money for it, so. And then, just our monthly updates that we do. So, we really see some of those promising initiatives is that the Certified Family Peer Specialist Program, our CTSS program, the work that we're going to be doing in trauma, and then our Lakes and Prairie Head Start has a pathways to grant, which is from the Department of Education, but it's providing a bug-in-the-ear coaching, and that they have some kids with some pretty significant behavioral challenges in the classroom, and that bug-in-the-ear program allows for a mental health professional to be outside the classroom coaching that teacher on how to address those challenges within her classroom setting, and so that they're very excited about that program, and that's a renewable funding that they get from the state. So, listen.
Mr. Chair, can I just look out? She brought up my name, and no way was I suggesting that your group is failing in what you do.
No, no.
I want to give you just a real example of what I'm talking about in terms of failure. When we have a pregnant woman in our community who's thirty-some weeks into her pregnancy and is still taking heroin daily, that is a problem. That is a problem, and we haven't been able to stop that. That's an example where I say we fail. We fail as a society. And where do you suppose that child is when that child is born? It's in ICU for weeks and weeks and weeks because of the activity of the parent. And then, what does that lead to down the road? More potential trouble because of that addiction by that person. Those are the things... I was just during our break, I was talking to our Assistant County Attorney. She said that they don't really have the tools to be able to do anything earlier on those... that's what I'm talking about when we fail, not... because we do fail in those areas. So, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, I'm a parent, so I've been in a system like I was telling Carolyn. If it wasn't for the Lakes of Prairie Head Start, we wouldn't have been identified from mental health services. So, it's really finding these kids early, you know, and the trauma-based work, you know, because I've, you know, I've seen a lot of, you know, like the mother who's pregnant, you know, okay, where's she coming from? And it's that ripple effect because the child's going to start out needing services probably all the way into adulthood, so it's finding them at that really age, and that's really... I love being on the call to call the input, but it's like, how can you find these kids when they are the zero to three and getting them what they need? So, we don't have that ripple effect into foster care, into even corrections, you know?
And I, you know, I think, you know, I think we need to use your abilities, and we need to listen to our county attorneys, and we need to listen to our health, you know, our social service departments. When there's indications of problems early, we need to be able to have proper regulations in place that allow us to step in soon rather than late. And, you know, I was just, again, talking with our Assistant County Attorney, and there's some of that... their hands are tied on some of that stuff, and that's where we have to be able to research and find out why are those hands being tied and allowing things to get worse.
All righty. Anything further?
We have a proclamation there.
Is this the same proclamation? Is this a different one?
It's the same one.
It's the same one? Okay. Very good.
And then, also, I invite you guys to join Wayne on Thursday. We are Observing Children's Mental Health Day, and we are all going to try to wear green.
Wear green.
Yeah, wear green. On Thursday.
So, having a special LAC meeting.
Yeah, we're having a special LAC meeting. Observations. We invite you guys to join if you can.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess I appreciate you guys coming forward. We've got more coming forward to you, but it just shows us that Clay County is more than roads and bridges and buildings, you know? And when you look at all the presentations we've received here today and what all is going on in this county, you know, it's not, like I said, it's not just roads and buildings. It's... we are people that we're taking care of here, and thank you very much for your help in doing that.
Do you need to approve our membership list and stuff?
What?
Do we need to approve our membership list?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Carolyn. Okay. The next thing we got is a Place for Hope Recovery and Wellness. Ladonna, of course, there.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ladonna.
I don't know if you're familiar with what a Place for Hope is, probably, but anyway, we're essentially a social club for individuals who have a severe and persistent mental illness, where they can come and partake in activities and receive food, wash laundry, things like that, and all of our services are provided free to them.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say that formerly known as the Social Connection.
Yes.
And I think the name was changed because people who were giving grants thought it was kind of... sounded like a dating service.
Oh.
That was one of the reasons why they changed the name.
Well, and then they had that X in there that kind of confused people, too, because there was that...
Yes.
The way it was spelled. So, yeah. Okay. Well, you may or may not know this either, but in January, they lost their original executive director, and so I just started here in February, on February... well, the day, February 29th. And so, getting my feet wet, getting things under my belt, figuring it all out, so we're there. Our numbers are up, which from last year significantly actually. Our numbers are up, which, from last year, significantly actually, like first quarter numbers, we went from quarterly attendance of 12,018 to quarterly attendance of eighteen, 1,832. And then, our quarterly unduplicated attendance went way up to, from 119 in 2015 to 294 this year so far. I've had, just until the first of May, I already did my April stats, we've had seventeen new members. I've had probably at least nine old members come back that we have to, you know, re-update and everything like that. So we're growing. We are very busy, and I'm kind of running a one-woman show there for now, until we get the money situation under control. As you know, Clay County, BCal are two of our primary grant sources, and I'm waiting to hear from Otto Brammer Foundation, so. We did get a $5,000 grant from the FM Area Foundation, and then the philanthropian youth awarded us some money from Shanley, gave us a thousand, and Park Christian gave us 250. So, that's kind of nice. We've added three new board members that will be starting this month, and I've reconnected with Experienced Works, SEP, and SERVE YES to see if we can get some outside volunteers coming in as well, because we are pretty much member-run unless I can get outside volunteers to come in, because we don't technically have funding at this point to hire anybody else. I have planned a Day of Hope open house on May 25th that will be at our site, obviously, and that'll be from four to eight. And then, we've also, we're getting together with A Place to Belong, which is the Detroit Lakes and the Fergus Falls social clubs, and A Place for Friends, which is the Breckenridge social club. We're going to get together, and we're going to have a march and a picnic on the 26th in Breckenridge. And what we're planning on doing with that is every year rotate. So, next year it might be here, next year it might be in Fergus Falls or Detroit Lakes or something like that. Other than that, you know, it's pretty much same old, same old, day-to-day stuff, trying to find activities that are affordable, that are exciting for people, and just keep plugging forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Is Ben Neri still on your board?
Yes.
Ben was the co-chair of the Adult Mental, Local Advisory Council of Adult Mental Health, and he's also, is he the chair, the chair of your board, or?
He's the president.
President of the board.
Right, but he is, he's coming to term, so he's going to have to step down pretty soon. I am looking at, I've got a couple of leads from individuals at MSUM that might possibly be interested in being on our Board of Directors. And then, Barb Moos was just one of the ones from Lakeland that we just agreed to have on. I don't vote, but I mean, that they voted on to be on our board, so.
This is one of those situations where growing numbers are probably a good thing, so.
Yes.
Having more people involved in your.
Well, it would be yes, but there is the, then the funding aspect too, because then there's more cost for activities, there's more, you know, laundry being washed, there's more dishes being, you know, those kind of things. So, I'm fine with it, but we need to do, we're, we're trying to work on our, we're all outreach too, because technically, we're all Clay County, but, you know, very few come from, other than Dilworth and Moorhead. So most of our membership is really centered here, and we have to do more outreach to get to, like, Holly and Barnesville and things like that. So we're, we're cooking up a plan for that, so. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Very beautiful. Okay, with that, we're going to rethink mental health in Egypt for Rory Viall and Chitica or Gina Lepka.
She's not feeling well today, so I'm going to stand in for her.
Okay.
For. Thanks for having me. I'm Rory Viall, and so I am the Project Manager for Rethink Mental Health. And, so I'm here today to give you an update. So back in 2000, once I figured this out.
What's your name?
Back in 2012, there was a community health needs assessment. There was a community health needs assessment that identified priorities in Cass and Clay Counties. And obesity was one of them, mental health was one of those priorities. So there were a group of people who, in addition to their regularly assigned work, began taking on this mental health initiative in the community to assess and identify what those needs were and what it is we could do about as two counties. And Gina Nolte ended up leading that effort, and then back in August of 2015, I was hired as the, as the Project Manager. And so I want to give you an update on Rethink Mental Health. And so, once I get everything going here, so the, the vision is better mental health, better mental slash behavioral health care and experience, all at a better cost, which certainly has not been lost on my ears this morning as I've listened to your, to your meeting. And I think there's plenty of opportunities to improve. And so, the funding, particularly for my position, comes from the Bush Foundation, but there's been a significant number of community partners that have chosen to fund this in its early years as well, and we think, we're having some discussions with MDH right now, and we think they're certainly interested in piloting some things with Clay County or with the SHIP Group, with mental health involved, unlike anything that's involved in other county groups in the state. And so, we're hopeful that will become a reality. And so, the goals, you know, if you look at public health as an institution, policies, practice, systems, community-level efforts are really what we're looking at. How do you create that culture that makes it easier? How do you create that structure? And so, those are the things that, that we're currently working on, and I have some examples to share. There are four active work groups. There's a prevention, early intervention group, which is one I'm leading, recovery support, Denise Peterson from Regroup, Gina leads the treatment group, and then there's a combination Carrie McLeod from Sanford and Bree Talson from essentially the crisis group. And so, I'm going to give you an update on prevention, and you know, I, I can't not refer to, as I listen to this discussion, Ed Elert, the Director of MDH, you know, he made a comment, he was in the paper back in December, that said, "We're not going to treat our way out of this." He was referring to a lot of things, but chronic disease and mental illness and mental health were part of that. And I certainly acknowledge how important that treatment and care is. We're going full speed ahead. We think there's some really strong evidence about how prevention and early intervention can maybe minimize some of the things that are developing and are increasing in cost in our community. So, just a little bit of information, you know, about a half of Americans will experience mental health at some point in their life, and most will originate in childhood. And so, the first days of my work here, I came across, I think, a really compelling study that was just released, and it was, they followed kindergarteners for twenty years, the researchers did. And while they were in kindergarten, their teachers assessed their, their social and their emotional skills, and the researchers followed them for twenty years. Now these kids are 25, 26, 27 years old, and what they found was, those kids who had the poorest social skills in kindergarten, significantly more likely to be dealing with substance abuse, mental health, to be on waiting lists for government housing. And so, part of my cheerleader role is that, I don't know that everybody sees that connection between adult outcomes and childhood social and emotional skills. And, you know, often we wait until kindergarten, as this study did. Carolyn would make a strong and viable case that if we wait till kindergarten, we're really missing the boat, because there's so much brain development that happens, and early experiences really impact how that brain develops before kindergarten. And so, I would say maybe the hub of what we're looking at is trying to develop some network that, you know, in the field, the word trauma is used, maybe the friendlier terms are adverse childhood experiences, and building compassionate communities. And so, there, there, these adverse experiences can really have a profound impact on the development of a child, and so, they range in the categories of abuse, neglect, household dysfunction. And with each additional one of those that a child experiences, there's a dose response that increases the likelihood of a lack of physical activity, smoking, alcoholism, you know, get diabetes, chronic disease, depression, suicide attempts. And so there's really a strong connection. And Minnesota Department of Health uses this term, let's see, syndemic, which is looking at issues that have common roots. And so you'll see in schools, there'll be bullying prevention and drop-off prevention and teenage pregnancy prevention. And I think, as we look more closely at social issues like that, there's some really common roots, and very often, it has to do with a child having experienced some adverse, adversity as a child. Now adversity is not a death sentence, because many children have resiliency and they get through that, but we want to make sure we create that environment. But they're really, they're common, and these adverse experiences rarely occur in isolation. So, I wanted to share one example. The state of Washington has done a tremendous amount of work for several years, and they took a typical classroom based on the survey of students in, in their state. And they found that in the classroom of thirty, a little bigger than we have, but five of those kids had no adverse experiences. Five had, four had, let's see, five of them had one, six of them had two, and then you get to the bottom row, where the bottom three on the right, two of them had six, one of them had eight. And here's what we know. In a typical classroom right now, in where we live, two and a half kids have had six or more adverse experiences. And what that means is, that's an average life expectancy of about twenty years less, about 55 years old. That's like a third world statistic. It's kind of a silent epidemic, so you experience all of these adverse experiences. It has a profound effect on so many things. And we're, I'll, I'll get to a solution that we think we're going to make happen in Cass and Clay Counties. But the progression is, you have this experience, it impacts your brain and brain development, then it impacts your social and your emotional and your cognitive development, increases the likelihood of high-risk behaviors, increases the likelihood of chronic disease, and ultimately early death. And so those are some things that we have our eyes on, and from a prevention perspective, we think some of the solutions are mental health everywhere. I'm married to a teacher, she has a role in this. She's not a clinician, but she has 175 days each year to have an impact on a child. And so if in her class, little Johnny's misbehaving, it would be really easy to label him as a naughty boy. And he may be acting that way, but what this trauma training helps us to do is to kind of reframe how we see that child and try to understand what's going on in Johnny's life that's prompting him to act like this. And maybe I can do something as a teacher, as an early childhood provider, as a juvenile system staff to identify, but then maybe bring some compassion and help that child develop some of the skills to overcome that and increase the likelihood of some positive adult outcomes. And so there's work happening in schools right now. We've been able to piggyback, the state of North Dakota now requires eight hours of mental health training for their school staff, all K through 12 staff. Very rare that North Dakota would lead in something like that, but they have. And we've been able to piggyback on that. That training has been adapted for WIC providers, for early childhood providers, your juvenile detention center is, is looking at that training. And so, it's, it's a compelling training, and it can change somebody. And so, we're looking at creating a hub in Fargo and Moorhead. MDH has trained a number of cohorts of trainers around the state, and we're trying to figure out how we can build a system that's going to really increase the spread of that knowledge. You don't know what you don't know, and we say help to build a compassionate community. Recovery Support is one of our other active work groups, and they too are looking at the issue of trauma and really digging into the effectiveness of peer-based help, more effect, less expensive and very effective. And so that's something that, that group is looking at. As I said, Gina leads the, the treatment group, and this isn't shown very well, but they've identified some issues with access, not enough programming, not enough services, funding, for example, existing funding won't pay for the same-day appointments for masters' level professionals regardless if they're from different specialties. And so, that group is digging into that. Behavioral health, lack of communication between behavioral health providers, looking at health information networks to be able to spread that information easily, and building behavioral health into primary care. So, many of us see primary care providers, how do we build mental health into that realm? And probably the biggest undertaking of the, of the treatment group and the crisis groups together is, they use some phrases like, no, let's see, we'll get down where, they've done quite a bit of work, but no cold handoffs, no wrong door. And so, there's an effort to, to look at the 211 number that First Link staffs here to be the, maybe the hub, or the front door to triage calls regarding behavioral health. And what if you get evaluated at Prairie and you're not appropriate? Well, we're not going to give you a card and then find someplace else, but how do we have a warm handoff so we can help this person who's having a challenging experience to find someplace where they can get care? Because right now, in the mental health world, as I've discovered, is there a lot of cold handoffs? And so it's a matter of systems working better together, communicating better together, overcoming some perceived HIPAA issues, which we think may be more perceived than real, and then trying to work on some policies that are different between North Dakota and Minnesota. And so, we're at, I've been at this for now about nine months, and so we feel like there's a lot of momentum, and we think, we had a summit back in, in February where maybe 150 people showed, and, and I feel, what I hear from Rhonda and Carolyn, that there's a growing awareness, and I think that's a first step. I don't think that's a solution, but there's a growing awareness, and Rethink is, is behind, or can put some human resource behind bringing people together and helping to come up with some long-term solutions. I'm going to pass, pass out just so you can see the Minnesota, let's see, what is this? Minnesota Prevention Resource Council in April, their newsletter, the front story, Substance Abuse and Child Trauma. If you saw the forum a couple of Sundays ago, trauma was the top story, the lead story on the front page, so this is a prominent issue, and we think, we'd like to be on the front end of it.
Just want to make a comment. It's exciting to have you in Clay County as part of the team. Rory was a significant coach and mentor in my life, not necessarily in the mental health field that you're talking about, but he helped shape positively my life, and, and if you have any reflection on your staff, as you did on me, I'm sure we're in fantastic hands, so thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
She turned on. Yeah, not bad, not bad.
I didn't want to age you. He coached at like age fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rory. Okay, with that, we'll go into committee reports. Kevin, you know, it started out today.
Sure, I can do that. Last week, we had our monthly Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting, and pretty much the discussion there was budget issues, and we spent time talking about the arbitration that's actually taking place this week, that's finally going to happen with the, let's just say, the inability to meet the contract from our, from our standpoint, that's costing Prairie Lakes a lot of money to fix problems with the original contract on boiler. And we have scheduled a budget meeting on May 13th, I believe it is, to see where we are moving forward, if, if what we did late last fall is helping any in terms of solving this financial crisis that's taking place in that facility. Then the next day, we had a solid waste advisory committee meeting, and there were some presentations done there. There was one that deals with single use of plastic bags, you know, there's starting to be these conversations all around as far as, you know, Minneapolis has banned them and other communities are at least having dialogue about it. And one of the interns that we had here actually proposed, the solution was to ban them in Clay County. We're at a, certainly not at a point where, where we're looking at doing that yet, but there's going to be more dialogue with the retailers and, and the consumers to see what alternatives are out there. The bad, the one thing, misconception is those plastic bags aren't, aren't recyclable, and they are. But it's making sure that people know where they can take them, you know. So, it's an education process that we have to, have to go through. Then we did receive our first report on the single-sort regional material resource facility, and there's been no recommendation as far as where that should be, or if there, you know, if there should, if all the products should just be shipped to Minneapolis, for example, once it's collected and have it sorted there, so that's, that's where that's at. And the same. And the same day, I also had a diversion authority meeting, and that's, the second diversion authority meeting in a month is usually just to kinda deal with project contracts. This particular case, we had some, we had closed sessions regarding two issues. One was regarding the lawsuit, and then the other one was regarding a contractor on a specific project. There were some problems with the work that was done, that was several, a couple million dollars involved. And so, that's as detailed as I can really get, because it was done in closed session, and there's still pending legal action there, so that's all I have.
Derek?
I didn't have any committee meetings last week. I did have the department head training that I appreciate. Thank you for your work, Darren, in bringing that together. I think you spearheaded that. And then I also attended the Moore Business Association meeting that.
I had a MRCC meeting on transportation issues, and we're kinda scrambling there to get some things in place, to push the legislature to approve some transportation funding for greater Minnesota. So we'll see how that goes in the very near future. And the solid waste meeting, Kevin talked about that, and the jail finance, which I talked about a little earlier, and there, the committee supported looking at the jail and law enforcement center as one project, and moving forward within that regard. Also the Moore Business Association meeting on the jail and law enforcement center, and I thought that went excellent. Seemed to be a lot of support, a lot of interest from the business community, and, and hopefully they'll lend us their support in the future. That was it for me.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, April 28th, Family Healthcare, General Business, it was a rather lengthy meeting, however, two things stood out. Moorhead's dental clinic at the Family Service Center, which is part of Family Healthcare, will be expanding to two new chairs for patients due to a $100,000 grant from Delta Dental. And I had mentioned that a couple weeks ago, or last month. More grants are in progress to hopefully increase that, even increase that. And then the West Fargo location of Family Healthcare has recently opened and is going quite strong. And that is extending my report, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I was at the, I was just too at the group that we had there, and I really was happy to see the attendance there, to show that there's a, and they're concerned about what's happening with our employees, the concerns of the employees, and that we can look into that, and hopefully come up with solutions there. Moore Business Associations on Wednesday morning, I think it was a very well-attended meeting, it was a very good presentation given there by Grant and Kevin and Brian, and I think it was good information given, I think it was well-accepted, and it was just good information for them to see. Thursday, I was part of audit committee for the Partnership for Health, sort of a new group, and we had our first audit, and they came out completely, almost 100% audit, you know, no errors were detected at all, and it was just a very good audit there, and it's just, it was good to see that, one of their first year of operation. And also while I was there, Kathy introduced me to Kent Severson, who's our environmental health specialist over there, and he was just, got us to, completed this course and standardized food inspection officer, and successfully completed the course, and was a, so one of the recognized him for doing that too. Also, I was, came up with conversation with Representative Mark with this weekend, I think today, Representative Mark with Senator Ekin and Representative Van Leeen are all meeting with the lieutenant government, lieutenant governor, and then they're gonna discuss on the mental health issues of the jail and trying to get some funding there, so it's gonna be a good meeting there, and hopefully be a productive meeting for us there. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I did have a couple contacts yesterday and one this morning. Scott Uchins from the city of Moorhead sent me over the bonding lists that the senate is putting forth, and, and neither one of our projects, our jail project or solid waste project are in that from the senate side, but hold out a little hope for the house. But the positive news on that, the money is in there for the overpass from the senate side. But the scary part about it is that the way things are going out down there, and the wide margin between the house and the senate on the capital investment committee, the bonding committee, I suppose there is a chance that they may not pass one this year. Frankly, and not to throw out a scare tactic either here, but I think it's something that we have to be aware of and cautious of. And that is, you know, we will then hopefully go to the vote this fall on the sales tax, but then we have to go to the legislature next summer, or next winter. And if they have a deadlock, sometimes those bills just get lain there, even though they're good bills, they're easy bills to pass, but they sometimes just don't get addressed. And I just throw that out, 'cause that has happened before, and we don't expect that to happen, there should be no reason for it to happen, but sometimes they don't get a vote. So, we'll have to be cognizant of that is all. It's already been talked about, the recruiting and retraining training that we held with the department heads and me, and the commissioners. I think it, it started out a little slow. I think the discussion we had in the afternoon was really, really healthy and good for, for the exchange, and I always appreciate that. I think the MBA meeting, the Moorhead Business Association meeting went really well at the courthouse, it's already been talked about. We did have a zoning meeting with the city, referenced the project, and discussed a lot of topics on parking lots and the temporary parking lots, and when do we take possession of it, when do we eliminate the, the services, what does it need to be zoned, how about the infrastructure underground and how we handle that. So we had a real good, productive meeting in regards to that. I think we learned some things and communicated our, our message quite well to the city. Darren and Jennifer and I met with Brenda. Brenda used to be an employee here at Social Services, and now she's in her masters program. And, well, I guess for five years, Darren and I have been talking about our evaluation program, and as her project, she did some real good work in regards to looking at, you know, overhauling our performance evaluation. It hasn't been reviewed or approved changes since 1999. That's a good thing, if it's working, that's fine, but that's 17 years now, so we'll look if we need to revise that somewhat and do some tweaking on it. So, you'll hear more about that in the immediate future, about one, two, four months. We had a diversion conference call with DC, and they're talking about what's the next steps in regards to the federal legislation on it, and may involve a trip out there, and they'd like to see some Minnesota representation on that. I think I forwarded that email on that, and I to you too, I think, yeah. Joe, Bruce, and Tim and I met in regards to the house inspections, abatement programs, then the demos, and getting an RFP out there, and, and we're going to bring that to you for information's sake. Right now, the inspections aren't costing us too much money, it's a professional service. The, the demos that we're looking at, we have a, I think it was six out of the 12 homes need some abatement on the asbestos on it, and I think that's gonna run about 25,000, that's quite a large amount, so we wanna bring that to you for approval before we go ahead with those abatements on it. And then, of course, the demo, that's gonna be quite large, so we'll have to put out a, a bid proposal on that. But we're moving forward with that, and, and there's a lot of things to do, and you keep hearing that from me, that there's a lot of things to do, but boy, there's a lot of dots to connect, to make this all work. Ended the diversion meeting, Commissioner Campbell's already addressed that. Kathy and I, and Darren and I met on Friday morning, I believe it was, in regards to the personnel proposal that she presented to you today, and then I met with our chair yesterday to discuss these topics, so. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I wanna go back to the MBA meeting. The, first off, thank Vicky for your work that morning, that, that's an early morning meeting, and you, she got all the breakfast stuff ready, the fruits and all that stuff, she must've been here awful early to, to do that, and I wanna thank you for that, and, and thank the MBA for going out of their normal place of meetings to come here, and I do wanna send out a shout to Julie and Justin. I understand that they had a pretty good turnout for the tour of the, of the jail, and I, and they all said that, that she, they handled that very well. And I do wanna say too, to what Mr. Wayland said, that several of the MBA members came up to me after the meeting and were very pleased with what they're getting in the direction, and obviously some of them have, have more questions that we will have to provide answers for moving forward. But overall, I thought it was a well, well-attended meeting and good presentations by all.
Okay. Rory, or Darren?